Call to order, the Planning Commission Subdivision Committee Regular Meeting for Wednesday, July 26, 2017. Get a roll call, please.
Chair Andre.
Here.
Vice Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Self-Lackenick.
Here.
I figured I'll join me and stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may address the Planning Commission and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item listed on the agenda, please sign in on the oral communications sign-in sheet located on the podium. Remarks are to be limited not to not more than five minutes. Seeing that nobody's coming up, we go to approval of the minutes for the meeting of May 24, 2017.
You have a second set of minutes.
Saw that.
You put on your vest, and the yellow highlighted section has been changed, and so that's what you'll be voting on today.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to approve the amended second set of minutes.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Regarding to Section 9, Commissioner Reports, third sentence regarding my visit to the subject property, I didn't major it, I never stated that I measured it. I think my comments, I stepped it off, something less precise, but I just want to make sure that it's reflected that I did not measure. You see what I'm talking about?
Yep.
In Section 9?
Being up to 10 feet when you stepped it off.
Right.
You should have measured it.
Yeah, I didn't use, I mean, I didn't use a specific device, a rule or anything, I basically stepped it off.
Couple of other minor typos. Page three. Third paragraph, where it mentions the code 17.260.08, it should just be .26. Same way on the one down below.
Wouldn't have that.
And then on page four, sixth paragraph, third sentence says CCNRs, it states, it should be the code. It should be the code, and then farther down, Commissioner Riley commented, it should also be code. We got into CCNRs later, so. And, that's it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to...
Do we have a motion?
Approve with him changes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. We have nothing there, so we move to public hearings. Item A is a continued consideration of a five-unit residential condominium development application for tentative tract map, conditional use permit, and site plan review at 3751-3755 Barquar Avenue. This appears that it's being recommended that we continue this previously opened public hearing to the August 23, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The applicant was not quite ready, is it?
He filed his application, but we haven't deemed it complete.
Okay.
Because it was incomplete at this time, and he also is out of the country.
Okay, so is there anything that needs to be done on that, other than?
You need to decide whether you want to continue the item.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have to actually vote on that at this point?
Uh...
On continuing the item, or?
Just take a consensus.
Yes, just take a consensus.
Okay.
I have a, I have a comment.
Okay.
Along with that. I'm okay with continuing it, but in the staff report, it says he's continuing it because he's applying for a variance.
Mm-hmm.
And it's there, in the subdivision code section of our code, 1610.090 zoning conformance, this is if we're doing the tentative map, okay? A tentative map shall not be approved if it is apparent that any proposed parcel cannot be developed to its intended use without the modification of site development standards. That's what 090 says. And then in 1610, 1612.030, I should have read this first, it says compliance with zoning. Subdivision shall be designed in such a manner that all proposed lots comply with applicable zoning regulations in a manner that will permit the establishment of their proposed uses without further deviations or variances as stated in Section 1610090, which I previously read. So, here's copies, you guys can have, because it's not in our book, we don't have a section in the book that has 16. So I don't know whether the variance is, it says here it's not allowed. And for that matter, any deviations from our site development standards at all.
Is there anything that staff or council could say to elaborate on this information?
Well, council really hasn't dived into the variance application yet, because it hasn't been deemed complete.
Okay.
So she will certainly advise staff as we go through those issues in variance applications.
Oh, I see.
He applied for a variance at the request of one of the commissioners, the one of the commissioners that brought it up, that he should apply for a variance, and that's why he did it.
Okay.
Oh, is there a second section? 1612.030.
Okay, so at this point, we can take a consensus to put in for the continuation while you continue to work on the application, finding if it's even allowed at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like every analysis you see here, when we get an application, deem it complete, we start analyzing.
Okay. Is everybody actually okay with the continuation then at this point, in letting them investigate further?
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move it. The public hearing then to August 23? Okay. Item B, conditional use permit, CUP 17-03, outdoor storage in the planned lighting industrial PM zone. Do we have a staff report on this?
Sure.
Me?
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
This is a staff report, a conditional use permit to have a temporary use in the industrial zone for a temporary storage. The applicant is Mike Wilson. I think most of you have met Mike Wilson over the years. He's been a great part of our community, and so has the church. As you know, the church is located in the city of Cypress. Across the street from their Cypress location is the Los Alamos border, and they own a remnant parcel from the old railroad right-of-way, just north of Arrowhead property. What they'd like to do is build into a temporary storage facility to help them out with some of their storage needs. They propose some temporary structures, temporary paving, temporary drainage. The entire application is, is pretty much designed to be temporary, yet they were seeking permanent approval. Staff certainly supports the temporary use of this, but at the drafting of the staff report, the applicant had stated he wanted it to be longer than five years, and that is why you have a recommendation of denial. Staff just can't support a semi-permanent approval for a temporary use. I think if you had a permanent structure here built that met all sections of the code and was reviewed during site plan review, I would have a different response. But, least admitted with the city, staff is not supportive of the application as presented. Mr. Wilson is in the audience tonight to present his side of the story and what he's interested in having. What I'm trying to prevent, that if in five years, the burden would be on the city to remove that facility or to have a hearing to revoke a CUP, I'm trying to keep us out of that loop. If there was a voluntary withdrawal or voluntary forfeiture of the land use approvals at five years, I would be very supportive of this as presented tonight and would be presenting you with a different staff report. But with that, that is the staff report that we're presenting with you tonight. We don't support a permanent approval for a temporary structure or a temporary facilities. And with that, this is a public hearing. I would recommend that you open the public hearing, take any testimony, and also hear from Mike.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there, it doesn't appear that there's anybody else that would want to speak on it, but certainly you're welcome to come up and let us hear your side of it.
All right, thank you. I feel kind of guilty you guys have to come out here just for us. We, we, Stephen's right, we spoke to him, and we wanted to have a storage on the railroad right-of-way that we own in the city of Los Alamos. We applied for a CUP, and of course, our, our top goal is without restriction as to time, and we had also asked, in my response back to him, we, I asked for five-year with a review, that the Planning Commission could review it at that time and either deny or grant an extension. And that was our last communication. After that, I saw in the, in the paperwork there that it said that we could get an extension. I thought that, in my understanding, that that would be the same as a review, and responded back to Tom and Stephen in that way. So our top goal is to be without restriction, and then our desire is to have a review in five years, so that the commission could grant or deny continuance of it. Our least favorite choice is, is the five-year, and it would appear at that time that it would be a whole new CUP from, from what I got from talking to Stephen. But we desire something else, of course, for our benefit, and we'll think we've been a good part of the community and would remain that way. And you've probably seen how we keep our properties up, and our Los Al campus and our Cypress campus, we keep in nice shape. So we hope that that would help, and that's what I have to, the input that I have unless, Vicki, no, our consultant doesn't have, so thank you for hearing us, and thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do, before, do we have any questions while the applicant is up? For the applicant? Any questions or clarifications? No? Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission here. Any questions or comments?
I have some questions, comments. First of all, page two, I think under approval criteria, that should be 1726010, I believe, second line, second paragraph.
Lisa's trying to confirm before the commissioner.
Um, no, you said 1726010, no, that was supposed to be 1710, Tom, that was a change. It's supposed to be...
1710.
Industrial zoning district.
Right, that's it, 1710020.
And it's supposed to be 1710020, I believe.
Yeah, I could see it in the other paragraph on the next page.
I'm sorry, I caught that correction in one place, I didn't catch it.
Actually, it may be...
It's table 204, it's under 1710020.
That's it. Okay, that, and then on the next section, background section, application was filed, when was this filed?
June 1st.
Yeah.
Um, I dropped information.
May 31st.
May 31st.
It's in the top right of the discretionary application that you have in your packet?
I have that in my packet.
There was the supplemental.
That's what I think you know, too.
I guess this, I can't...
Well, it was dated by '26, so it couldn't be the 11th.
Of this year?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was in the supplemental materials.
Right.
I can barely...
Can barely see it.
Then in location paragraph, I think it should be McCullough Middle School, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, sixth sentence.
Oh, and so...
And also, then going down to discussion, the plans that were provided to us, the setback on the south, south property line is only five feet. Is that one of the staff's concerns, that it needs to be a 10-foot setback?
No, our concerns are the temporary nature of all the facilities proposed in the application.
Okay, but...
We're not denying it based on it not meeting, our recommendation of denial is not based on the setback.
But if it was to be approved, we would have to change that from five feet to 10 feet.
Yeah, it would have to meet code, yeah.
Right, okay.
Even in a CUP?
Yeah.
And then, and then there's discussion about, and there's requirement in the code for CUP for visual barriers.
I saw that, yeah.
Site barriers, appears that they already exist, the chain link fence with the, so that's not an issue either. It's just the temporary basis, temporary nature of the, of the containers.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think they described the visual barrier as a block wall. I don't know if...
I was looking on, I was looking on the...
Yeah, I, I read it somewhere, it mentioned it in here.
But they exist.
Well, chain link fence is, I mean, that's...
It's got the vegetation on it.
Yeah.
So, okay, so it basically comes down to the temporary nature of the containers. And then there's discussion about future use under the general plan for a bike lane.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like, a couple things there, it seems like they can grant an easement or something along that, along that line for use as a bike lane past the containers, if that's, if that's, if that's a holdup.
I, I think there are ways to meet that general plan goal, yes. They are not represented on this plan, yeah.
Okay. And then I was wondering about some of the language, and again, I understand the concern about the temporary nature of the bins, but some of the language in the, in the resolution is kind of a little too broad, I think. Maybe it's just boilerplate language, but on first page of the resolution, attachment one, down at the bottom, one, and it basically talks about this one endangered the public health, safety. I think that's a little broad. Maybe you can, maybe you can support general welfare, but I think a lot of that's a little beyond the scope of what this project would actually do. And if you, and if you apply that language, even to grant them a five-year CUP, wouldn't that apply at a five-year as opposed to, I mean, if you grant them a CUP at all, you're going to have that concern whether it's a five-year.
Yeah.
So the five-year cutoff or termination, whatever, we're talking about really, this, this would be in place whether it was five years or in perpetuity.
Right, absolutely, yeah. I mean, we would still have those concerns. If this was a permanent construction, we still would be unable to make, I mean, if this was a permanent concrete tilt-up building, it'd be easier to make the findings that it was compatible with other like buildings in the area.
Right.
This is the primary use on this facility. Most industrial properties have a primary use that is like Fridas. Fridas has a primary use, you know what it is, it's a business.
Right.
Then they may have a storage area in the back of their property, many industrial buildings do, but they're never the primary use of a property.
They're still...
It's an accessory use, yeah, exactly.
I mean, the, the, the language about public health and safety, endangering public health and safety, I think that's a little broad, and I don't know that this, this property can be said to do that. Then I'm looking in the next page under Section 3. And again, this goes back to my point about the mobility and circulation element we could use, we could probably fashion a way around that with the, or an easement or something like that to allow the bike lane, if that's something that, that the city wants to pursue. But I think, looking at the code section, we do have, under the, under the CUP approval, we do have the authority to, to, that'd be Section 17.42.030. We can approve it with conditions, shall approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove. So it's under authority as a commission to do what you're asking. I'm just kind of wondering if, I was confused when I was talking to the applicant about the disconnect between your discussion about, what happens in five years? Is it, what's the difference between an automatic review and what, what the city wants? I'm not clear on that.
Well, as has been discussed in this commission meeting before, CUPs ride with the land. I think we all pretty much know that it's hard to revoke a CUP unless the applicant alters an application to request temporary. That's, has a little more teeth in it. Otherwise, the burden is going to be on the city to revoke this conditional use permit in order to re, to have these temporary structures, the temporary pavement, the temporary everything removed.
So...
And that, that's a difficult process.
Understood. So if, would the city be in a position that after a five-year period, that it would terminate subject to revisiting it with no additional fees or no additional burden on the applicant?
Well, no, I want the burden to be on the applicant. I mean, that's my desire, is the burden is on the applicant and that it, there is no work for the city or the applicant, app, the city or the commission in order to extend the use. Because then we're in the same position of finding why we wouldn't extend it, almost like having a revocation hearing.
I'm talking about have it revoked.
Mm-hmm.
Come back to us for review and possible extension, but no financial...
That's a reapplication of him at the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
A reapplication without the fees and associated fees.
We can't waive fees. Yeah, we're, us nor the commission is entitled to waive fees.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, so I look at this, and I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little confused about the whole thing, because it's clearly with the storage containers going on there, it's temporary in nature, but they're asking for indefinite use. I don't know why we would even consider it. I think five years is beyond what I would consider. I mean, I would say, you know, a year would be generous to find another storage solution. Is there, is there anything that would prohibit them from building something on the site?
No. No.
So, with the, the investment they made in the center across the street, they, they did everything the right way. They've made a nice development there, their, their church members, everybody, it's a good asset to the community, but on this, it seems like they just want to slap something down and be able to utilize it indefinitely, and I just, I don't think it's appropriate at all. So, that's why...
I agree with John on that one. I don't, five years is not temporary to me. And in it, it says, you know, to store props and stuff for their shows, well, those are never going to end, so it's going to be permanent, you know, storage containers there. I agree, I would like to see a permanent building be built. Five years is just one or two, it's temporary.
I didn't think that you could have like a, a time on a CUP, or an expiration on a CUP. Obviously, you can.
It's tou, she, they're going, if, you remember, we had a discussion about three years ago about this.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to recall.
And it was tough for Lisa to even respond to you at that time, because different courts see it a different way.
Yeah, generally, it runs with the land. I think we did it, I think it was a crossfit, and the difference there was the applicant came in and said, and I think it was, when I'm done with this use, the CUP will expire. There wasn't actually a definitive timeframe on it, if I remember right, and the applicant was saying, that's it, and I get that it won't run with the building, it won't be sold that way. Here, you're talking about the property owner wanting to do it just for five years, and again, it, it's difficult to revoke at that point, to explain why it can no longer stay in place after five years.
It just seems like we'd always put a time limit on a CUP. If you, if you could, why not always put one on there? Whether it be 20 years, 25 years, 30 years?
And again, I think those crossfits were, it was a slightly different situation, that, you know, there was some case authority to hold up, you could do it, but it's certainly not where the weight of the case authority goes, and then this is a different situation.
We have a section of our code that allows temporary uses for up to 12 months, and I have authority of doing that. But when it's beyond that 12 months, it goes to you. I don't have that authority.
Didn't we do that for the VFW, or did they want a little longer than that?
They wanted longer.
A little bit longer, right?
Yeah.
But during that, it came up that it was 12 months was...
Yeah, that's my authority, it's 12.
My biggest concern isn't just the length of time and the temporary, it's the looks of the building. We're the ones who also have to deal with it in our town, being whatever the temporary facility looks like, and I want to make sure that what we do ever have in our town comes up looking nice. Being honest, I tend to agree with them that I'm not really in favor of a temporary facility for five years, even for, a year maybe, but I, I would rather see the look of doing a permanent structure.
Yeah, new coat of paint on a shipping container is still a shipping container. I mean...
Well, I, I'll take a contrarian point of view here. I, I, I see in the, our code defines outdoor storage, it just says outdoor storage is the, is the storage outside the structure, which would be the, the business or the building. In this case, it's across the street, on land, they own land across the street, and that they're putting it into a container that is going to be screened from view. I don't know if anybody drove by the site, drove down on the road and saw, saw the storage facilities that are already in, that are being used in the center to the north. I mean, screened with shipping containers. If you go far, go farther back, there are shipping containers back there that are being used. You're seeing storage that is above the fences that are there, there are storage back there all along, all along the right-of-way here that are not fenced, they're all within the line of sight. I see this as a, as a, you know, we have no definition or provision in our code for permanent storage or temporary storage. It's storage. And I don't know which I would prefer to have, a, an electrician or a plumber coming back here, or, or somebody selling pipes and just storing junk on the site. We had that over here with WaterSafe, before WaterSafe went in, we had the Long Beach Grand Prix storing their, their equipment there, their bleachers, their barriers, just out there, just on-site with no screening from Cotella or anything like that, thing was an eyesore, until after WaterSafe went in. I drive by this, I see 15 acres of unimproved land to the south, and to the north are tilt-up buildings, windowless, no, nobody looking at it, with a myriad of junk and, I'll call it inventory, that has obviously been there for many years, and up above, you know, up above 10 feet or 12, probably up about 15 or 20 feet. And I, I look at this, you know, they want to have shipping containers stored on the lot that will contain their inventory and their goods. Okay, I would expect it to be protected, uh, you know, from the weather, that type of a thing. These containers by their nature are temporary. This use is temporary. Okay? When we apply for a CUP, a CUP by its nature is, I'm gonna say, i- it can be indefinite, it runs with the land, but it's the uses that come and go. How long are they gonna use it for storage, for as long as they need it? I mean, that's, that's, that's not necessarily indefinite, but it's, it's until some point...
But it could be.
It could, well, indep... it could be. And then, uh, the, the notion that this, how do we, i- i- if the city ever decided to execute on the bike path, what's the process for acquiring? We would have to acquire the land to put the bike path in, correct? You can't just...
You can require a dedication when something's permanently built, just like you do right-of-way when the residential properties are built, we ask for two and a half feet. You can ask for dedications.
But to, to somehow, you know, hope that that will eventually be, I think in our general plan, it talks about a bike path or a linear park, uh, that type, that type of a, you know, we would at some point have to acquire the property. Certainly be a lot easier to acquire if there's not a permanent structure on there. And if you're looking at an eighty-foot lot, or a sixty-foot, what was it, sixty feet? Is that what the width is? Sixty?
Width, yeah.
The width is sixty feet? Do we have a minimum lot size for development in the, in the industrial zone? Minim... minimum width? Forty or fifty? Tell them you've got that. Industrial...
Sixty feet wide, one hundred feet deep.
So, so, the idea to put a structure on, I mean, they're right, they're right at the limit of a structure, to even put a structure on there. And how would you get a bike path in the process of it? You know, storage is a, is a permitted use, it's an outright permitted use in the, in the zone, which we can condition for. I, I don't understand, I, I can see a, I can see a condition for a review if we are worried that there's gonna be something happening on the site, that we're, we don't know what's gonna happen, so we wanna condition so that if it does happen, we have a way to either impose further conditions or do whatever. I don't know that, that, uh... I don't know the setting, I, I don't, I don't know that the, the arguments presented by staff to deny this, uh... I don't know, I don't know for lack of a better word, that it's fair. I, I al... I almost feel as though it's, uh, uh, you're denying the use, you're denying the use, a permitted use. If, if the condition is you want a structure, then I don't believe that's a permitted condition. I don't believe. I mean, that's almost like, I think, tantamount to, almost a taking, if you're going to require and hope to require, uh, out of the ordinary conditions.
Outdoor storage is allowed in that zone by CUP, not by RIT.
Right.
And the outdoor storage section does cross-reference in the table where it says CUP specifically states, "Outdoor storage areas shall be screened from adjoining properties, public rights away by decorative walls, fences, and/or landscaping. Skates shall be solid. Screening shall be provided to height of one foot above approved height of materials being screened." So I, I, it is a condition that is contemplated by the code.
Well, I mean, I understand the screening and, and all of that, and I'm talking about is the requirement that they erect a structure. The structure, there, there is no structure. The bin, the bin is personal property, it's not a structure. You refer to it as a temporary structure, it's not a structure. It's not attached to the land. I mean, it's, it's brought in by a, by a truck or a crane, it's dropped there. If they were to, uh, I mean...
I think the word temporary...
Huh?
I think the word temporary in front of the structure is that it by nature...
It's not a structure, though. It, it is, it is, it's the item that's being stored on the site.
Nor is it temporary, though.
Well, there's no, there's no, we have no, we have no provision in our code for either temporary or permanent. The use...
I thought twelve months was what they said.
No, this, out...
Temporary, our temporary use section allows me to approve things twelve months.
This doesn't, isn't, this is not under the temporary use.
Right, it's a CUP.
This is a CUP. A CUP is a permanent, a CUP runs with the land.
Correct.
Okay? If, 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 if that's being called a permanent, if, that doesn't make this a permanent use. They have the, they have the ability to use it for as long as they need it, and if that, if that's ten years, twenty years, or for as long as the church is there, then that's, that's what it is. I, I'm not following the, uh, this notion that it's, it's an alternative to constructing a permanent industrial building. If it's, if they're gonna, if, if they're going to construct an industrial permanent building to have their outdoor storage, then what's the purpose of the code? We have a code that says you're, you can have outdoor storage on the industrial property.
Based on...
And if you, and if you have it, then we can condition it for, for screening. Well, we have to do screening, we have to do that, or we can condition it for other conditions that are reasonable for that, for that use. And I don't know that requiring them to erect a structure to put their, their materials in is a reasonable use for an outdoor story, is a reasonable requirement for an outdoor storage. It's like you're, you're, you're telling them, what you're saying is there's no outdoor storage is gonna be permitted, will be permitted on this property, when it is a permitted use, with a CUP, obviously. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, if, I guess I'd like to know specifically, what is it that we're afraid of, or that staff is afraid of, that is gonna occur within five years and that, that can't be conditioned for? I mean, if we can't impose a condition today to have them erect a structure, and we can't impose a condition today, I mean, can we impose a condition that they pave, grade-pave the, the site to drop, to drop the containers on? I mean...
They've already put gravel in. I mean...
No, no, I mean, i- i- if all, if all of this is acceptable, I mean, what, what is the issue? If, if the issue is just...
A container by nature is temporary, and they're asking for storage, but they're asking for, essentially, what they're asking for to not, to be able to have it just renew after five years automatically, is asking for permanent storage in a temporary application. The, the, a container is not even typically bolted to the ground, it's just sitting there. So you've got, by nature, a temporary application with somebody asking or requesting for permanent storage.
Well, wait a minute. They're asking for, what, what makes it permanent?
A permanent structure being...
No, 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 what makes the storage permanent?
The, the request, the asking for automatic renewal of the CUP?
No, no. What makes it permanent?
What makes what permanent?
The storage permanent. If, 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 if the, if the unit that they're putting in is temporary, then what, what makes the, what...
Temporary...
What ma... what makes this per... what makes this permanent storage? The CUP...
Running with the land...
The CUP, but it's the CUP that is, by its nature, it runs with the property.
Right, which indicates permanent.
And, and so, what you want to...
Could be. It could be permanent at that point, running with the land, if they're there for another fifty to seventy-five years, and they decide they don't wanna do anything additional other than have their containers there on that land, you now have a permanent storage in a temporary application, or a temporarily, temporary structure, if you don't call it a structure, but a temporary, uh, item that can be pulled in and out at any time.
How do they make this permanent?
Permanent structure?
But then it's not outdoor...
Like a warehouse.
Then it's not out, then it's not outdoor storage. Didn't, did we just eliminate warehouse uses in that, what could be eliminated in that zone? We made a change in there, didn't we? Warehouse, was it warehouse distribution?
Might have been, it was just, I think it was distribution. I don't think it was the storage. I don't, I don't...
If, if, if this, if this were a business, if this were a business that rented shipping containers, and they wanted to store the shipping containers out here, I mean, staff raises the point that because these are gonna be here permanently, there, whereas if stor- storage inventory comes and goes, there's nothing leaving the property, coming and going. Well, wait a minute. So if this were a business of renting shipping containers and they wanted to keep twelve on-site at a time, and we have the trucks, and but it's gonna be inventory and they're moving them in and out, is that the same?
Well, that's, that's entirely different because you actually have a business that would have been approved going through the proper channels to be approved for that.
They're, they're applying for outdoor storage for, for their shipping containers that they're, that they're gonna be renting, will be coming and going.
That's outdoor storage for the use of the container, which actually will be moving in and out versus a container that's sitting there that actually are putting stuff into...
But you'll always have containers there.
You may, you may not. They may, I might be all gone on rent, you don't, I mean, stuff's moving in and out. It's a totally different use of the container, or, of, of business that rents or moves containers versus somebody that's gonna stick one on the land and have it sit there for possibly an indefinite amount of time. I, I'm still in agreement with, with you guys in that I, I believe that, that five years to ha... to have it with automatic...
I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with a five-year, but a five-year review, not a five-year termination, and then, and then you have to come in and reapply and come back in and go through the whole process if it's, I, I, I think that that's a bit extreme. I would think that we would treat it like any other establishment that we've dealt with in the past where we've had concerns. We come in and we review, and then, and then express your, then express the concerns. What hap... what happens in fi...
The, the concerns would be the same, at least for me, as they would be today, five years from now. It would be, this was the idea of being a temporary storage, that something else would be done, um, either removed or, or something put in place. You know, but, but a- as they state, I, I, I see that as being extremely difficult once you've given somebody a cookie to go ahead and take away after five years. I mean, to put it in basic terms, I mean, that's, that, that's kind of the argument.
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
You know, I mean, you know, the expectation is, we're gonna go through the review, we're gonna fly through with, you know, flying colors, we'll, we'll go through, we'll get the approval again, we'll get another five years, we'll get another five years. Thirty years later, you're still looking at these containers on this, on this property and, um, that are, like I said, by nature, uh, temporary.
But if it's screened from view, what do we care? It's like looking at the land, if you drive by there and look at the fifteen acres of vacant land that, that's sitting there with Arrowhead, you see nothing. And if you drive by Lexington, you see nothing. If you look at the gate for this site, for, right here, you see nothing. And, and, so, you, there is no visual impact to this, at all. Well, well, when there, when, when will there be visual impact? You have, you have a tilt-up building right there with zero windows, and, and, going all the way down the line there, zero windows. At the end, you have the school district with their shipping containers at the end. Okay, out in the middle, they're out there, stored in the middle. Okay? And, and I think it's a school district, I don't know, there's three or four of them down there at the end. And, uh, you go to the end of the building right there, there's a shipping container right there against that building, the one that's facing you on the right, not inside, not screened, sitting out there.
If Arrowhead gets redeveloped...
If Arrowhead gets redeveloped, and they, and they, and they put their parking lot or whatever they do, again, we have it screened, the, if the property is screened, uh, I, I see the, and maybe, and maybe that's the condition. Maybe that's the condition at five, at five years.
Right? I mean, you, you...
You have to.
Whether somebody changes it, no matter what, at that point, the CUP would state that it would have to be screened.
But, but then at the end of five years, let's say that, that it develops, uh, Arrowhead develops, and another building goes up. Okay? And that, that screening is not adequate. Okay? Might be adequate today, it might not be adequate in five years, or ten years, whenever Arrowhead develops. So, we condition, then, that's a condition. We condition for adequate screening. I mean, it's, we condition at that point. If they can't, then you revoke the CUP. But, but, but I think the burden is on, is, is on, it's on us to come up with the conditions, it's on the, it's the burden of the applicant to, to meet those conditions, not just to say, "We don't wanna, we're gonna cut you off after five years because we don't know what's gonna happen, and we don't wanna take that chance, and we, and, and, and I wanna, you know, we'll burden the applicant as best we can because, uh, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen." Well, condition it. That's what the review and the conditioning is for.
But like, I'm not okay with five years. I mean, just for my personal, that's not temporary to me, so, I mean, I'm not talking about conditions for five years. I'm not okay with it.
Temporary is not...
Period.
Temporary, our, our code is for outdoor storage.
I think, I think I understand what I'm saying. They're applying for outdoor storage.
Storage, that's it.
Not, not temporary, not permanent. They're applying for outdoor storage, right? I think Art's point is that it, it's immaterial as to what they're storing on that parcel, be it storage containers with stuff inside of them, or storage containers empty, or a pile of pipes, or, you know, uh, whatever, whatever it might be.
Whatever. So... I mean, we can cond... obviously, if it's hazardous, yes.
No, but am I, am I right? Is it, whether, whether it's storage containers with stuff inside them, or, or other stuff that they're storing, it's outdoor storage, right? So, so the, the storage containers being temporary in nature is really immaterial 'cause they're, 'cause they're just applying for outdoor storage on the site. So, a- and I think that, that's consistent with what you're reading in the code. So...
If they're, but if they're asking for outdoor storage, why did they put a five-year?
They did. It's not in the application. I didn't see it in the app...
That's something that we can condition, that's up to us. So staff is recommending that, right? Because of the nature of this storage, I believe staff has some concerns about it because of its, its permanency and the nature of it, right? So staff is recommending that this, this might be something we wanna keep an eye on, right? And, and I understand, planning commissions change, city staff changes, a lot of things change, so, so put it, put the burden on the applicant to stay on top of that. So I understand all that stuff. So, so to me, the question comes down to, um, do we wanna allow outdoor storage on this parcel or not? If we don't, then we don't. If we do, then how do we wanna condition it?
If, if time is the factor, and, and because of the unknowns, then if, if, if five years seem to be the magic number, then we condition it with a review at the end of five years, with the ability to impose additional conditions or whatever to mitigate whatever, whatever has arisen in that five-year period. And if, if the land south of, uh, south of them remains vacant, then it remains vacant. If, if the, if they decide to put windows in there, or if all of a sudden the people along the wall there have a, a real sense of community pride and clean up that mess back there and keep it behind their, their fences and below the, the fence line and all of that, well, then maybe this one becomes the eyesore, and we condition for further screening or, or whatever we do, us or who, a future commission, we do that. But, uh, you've got the pot calling the kettle black on the, on the stuff to the north, and you have the big unknown on the stuff to the south, and with all of that uncertainty, we're gonna say, "You can have it for five years, we're gonna cut you off, come in and pay another fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars," and whatever it is in five years from now with the fees, I mean, who knows what they're gonna be, then, and then you come back in and we'll, we, you go through this whole process again. Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna require that, don't, you know, then wa... impose no fees. I think what we've done in the past is, is, we haven't had CUPs that have a, an end date of four years, five years, or ten years. We've, we've, if we're concerned about the use, we put a, a review date, and we bring them back in. We did it with, uh, McDonald's here, we did it with, come back in, see how it's going, are there anything that we need to do, and we, and we do it. And then leave it up to us to come up with the conditions that satisfy the community at that time. That's my, my thought. I mean, if, 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 if that's, if that's a real concern, then let's condition it and... that's, if that's a real concern, then let's condition it and let them come back in for a review.
I'm just curious on a couple of things. Like, this, this proposed site plan has, you know, the containers where they're going to be. Does it even matter where they're going to be? I mean, do they need to have that on this?
Well, we need to, they need to show what they're presenting to the commission. The commission needs to understand what they're proposing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you do need to have it on a site plan.
Move them, spread them out.
What happens if they, they aren't here later on, or they just, they moved, they're moved around? Does our CUP say that you have to have it like this?
There's a condition in there that it's primarily, uh, it shall remain substantial to what the commission approved.
Gotcha. This, that, this is showing what we approved. So, I'll just, just a, a CUP for outdoor storage, they could just do it, you know, I mean, they could just, if they didn't give us the site plan, they could just do whatever they wanted to.
But you usually don't approve outside storage in that manner. Usually when you review outside storage, it's a secondary use on a building. You want to make sure that no necessary parking is being taken up, or their loading area is not being taken up, or their circulation pattern for their trucks isn't being taken up. That's the normal way you review outside storage, if somebody wants to put something in, in their parking lot, or a fenced-in area in their parking lot.
I was curious, is on some of the other parcels with storage containers, I wonder how many of those have CUPs?
None. Um, there's, uh, like, power equipment for a cell tower. There's those kind of structures.
Right.
And then there's fenced-in yards, like you did with the, um, the recent tow yard.
Right.
And that was fencing.
Yeah.
And that was permanent pavement that was developable as is.
But most of the, uh, if there's industrial buildings out there and there's some storage containers on those lots, so it's most, most likely they didn't get a CUP to put those-
Correct.
-storage containers there. I'm just thinking, I'm just looking at it from the big picture. I'm just curious, if they would just put storage containers on this lot, I wonder if it'd have, maybe it would ever notice.
It would be a CUP, it would probably be code enforcement that would notice, or somebody would turn it into code enforcement. They're reactive mainly.
And I would just add, tagging on to what you said about how, how far back this goes. Do you own the land all the way to the school district?
We do.
I mean, not, not to have your one truck driving too far, but, I mean, it even could get to the point if we're going to condition, and there's developments along here, you get far enough down there on both sides of the building, you have, both sides of the land, you have backs of buildings back to each other. And there is no visual anything back there.
Right.
I mean, the only visual's going to be from the school district property coming forward. I mean, future conditions would be move them farther back. Just get them farther, farther back on, get, get them down to the, to the very end then where there's no impact on anybody. It's sitting there between, uh, you know, between two other buildings. If, 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 that's the only issue I can see is screening, is shielding it from, from public view and having it be, become an eyesore to whomever, let's say, develops the land there. They've spent $10 million on a big office building and, and, and all of a sudden they're looking down at a mess. And it doesn't matter that it's containers. If it were the same mess that's behind the other buildings, I, I, I would be asking for the same type of review if it was a pipe company that wanted to store all kinds of pipes back there. And then, you know, six months later, it's, it's all of a sudden, it's mushrooming more and more and more. I mean, well then, at the end of five years, you, you may want to say, hey, you know, you're, whatever. But, I don't know. That's my-
Um, just, just curious, uh, to the applicant, when you purchased this parcel, what, what was the original intent for, of use for, for the, uh, for the, for the property?
When we, excuse me, when we purchased it, we purchased the railroad right-of-way that, that's part of our campus now in Cypress. And we were able to get this property as well at a good rate. Uh, they charged us pretty good for the one we really wanted and little less for this one. So we, we purchased it and a dream would be to eventually put a, a storage and parking lot, storage building and parking lot. But as you know, it's very expensive. We spent a lot of money on our main campus and we're still filling in the shell there, doing TIs and, uh, selling the Los Al campus where the, the condos are going, is going to help pay down our loan and, and help us finish out some TIs within our building. So, uh, it's just a matter of, of time, doing what we can and, uh, building that way. We're, we were able to purchase the, the green lot out in front of us on the corner of, uh, Enterprise and Catella. One year, we bought that and took it from a dirt field to grass to make it look good. Um, and at some point, we may develop that when we have the, the cash in hand. But, um, that's, that was our plan for there. But on the railroad right-of-way is, the dream is, you know, a storage building and additional parking.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the, there was a comment made earlier, the setback is-
Ten feet.
Is 10 feet and these are five.
On the drawings, they're five.
On the drawings, right. So, um, that's something else that I, I guess would, if, if there's any consideration, would need to be dealt with. And I, I don't, I mean, it appears that there's room to do so. Um, maybe they were just getting them as close as they could so they could have access, possibly. Um, was, was there a reason that they were put at five foot? Do you know? I'm sorry to bring you back up.
Uh, just more, a, a larger driving lane.
That's what, okay. That's what I figured. Okay.
Yeah, I, um, just a couple of comments. I think both, both arguments are persuasive. And I think that the, uh, the temporary nature of the containers might be advantageous in the, in the event that we do want to dedicate this for a bike trail or some alternative use.
Certainly easier.
But, but the word temporary came into discussion early on. I don't know where that came from, possibly because of the containers. But Art brought up outdoors, outdoor storage and it's, outdoor storage is in the, is in the staff report. I'm not even sure this is outdoor storage. I think, the way I read outdoor storage is, is what Art referred to at the lot to the north, the outs, the outside racks with pipes and-
Right.
-and things stored out in the open. Because if you look at the definition of outside storage, it basically says, uh, means a space not within the primary structure that's used for the keeping of goods or materials and is not fully enclosed by solid walls and roofs. So arguably, this isn't even outside storage. I mean, you can make that argument. And, um, I just throw it out there because I, I do think that it's, it's kind of interesting that both sides, there's merits to both sides in this argument. Um, so.
That, and that's the struggle. Um, when I think of outdoor storage, or I think of even temporary storage or a container for that matter being used as storage, I think of it on, as an ancillary item to a, a structure, a permanent structure. In other words, just like, just like what you've mentioned, a building down there that has a container, or Stephen, like you just said, you know, that is fenced in on the property, doesn't take away parking, that type of a thing. Not 12 containers sitting on an empty property. That's, to me, the difference. Um, and, and the struggle.
Can, I'm not sure if this is a question for staff, the applicant, but who owns the fences on either side of the property?
Mike, are you?
Is that Arrowhead products or the property to the north, or do you all know?
I'm not certain. When we purchased it, it, um, we didn't really even consider that when we purchased. We just purchased the property. It, it may be on ours. One may be on ours, one may be on the others. I don't know. But, uh, you know, if, if they're not ours and somebody decides to tear them down, you know, I would assure you that we would take care of that.
Well, I, I don't know that those fences alone would be considered adequate screening. I think, I, I'm missing some pages on my zoning code.
They have passion fruit.
If it's not on their property, it can't count for their screening.
Understood, because they have to control it.
Correct.
So, so that, that's part of my question, and that's something we can condition. And then the other question is, um, I thought I read something that it needs to be one foot higher-
Or, yeah.
-than whatever you have on the property. Or, I don't know if that's exactly right, but, so I don't know that the existing fences there would actually qualify as required screening for that type of storage.
No, we, we analyzed the application as presented. If there, if you're leaning a different way, we'd make recommendations for him to modify his application.
Commissioner Riley is referring to, uh, section 17.38.120B where it states that screening, public storage shall be screened from adjoining properties and public rights-of-way by decorative walls, fences, and/or landscaping. Gates should be solid. Screening should be provided to height of, height of at least one foot above the approved height of the materials being stored. So.
There's also a section that almost is exactly the same that talks about metal structures.
Okay.
So we'll, they'll have to meet both of those.
Where is that?
Metal structures is in the table, the two-point, two-dash-oh-five on 17.10.030, property development standards.
If I can-
It talks about setbacks for metal construct, uh, metal structures with footnote number seven.
What's a, Stephen, footnote seven?
Oh, sure. Let me go back. It's in, um, 17.10.030.
Three-zero.
And it's in table dash two-zero oh-five, two-dash-oh-five. And, um, there are setbacks, and it talks about front, side, rear, and then metal structures.
Right.
Almost halfway down, more than halfway down the table.
Metal structures, right.
Yeah. And then it has a footnote seven attached to that, commission.
So you'd have to set it back?
A hundred feet, but then footnote seven.
What is, what is, what is a structure? Not to parse the words, but.
You probably have seven opinions here.
I don't, I don't consider a, a portable container a structure. A structure is something that's attached to the land. I have, I have the definition somewhere here. But, the attorney can look it up probably quicker than we can. But if we get into fencing or get into screening, I mean, uh, it would seem to me if, if the objection, the objection has to be visual, is, is what I'm hearing. Okay? If, if, if you had these containers and they're in a row, the screening doesn't necessarily have to be at the perimeter of the property. The screening can occur right at the, right at the side, the sides of the containers. They could put a 10-foot solid fence up. If these are eight, I don't know how high they are, eight feet? Eight feet. So they put up a nine-foot fence, you know, or better than that. Maybe paint it tilt-up concrete white so it fits the area, you know? But I mean, but seriously, put a, if you, if you, if you make the front of those, if you, if you completely shield that off, you know, I mean, right close to the, everything, you can put everything on it except a roof, then you have completely screened that out. And apart from a personal aversion to a container to store stuff in, uh, I think that would accomplish, that would accomplish, that's one way, that's one way to mitigate a problem that crops up at the end of a five-year renewal. Because, because the only thing that I can envision cropping up is going to be something that is visual. That's all that it can be. It, it, it's not going to be that the, that the land isn't paved.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, it is, it is the, it's the idea that a container is objectionable. Okay, let's, you know, if it is, if the container is what is objectionable, then that's their problem because they're using it. It's our problem and the public's problem if it's visible and an eyesore. I mean, that's, and as long as we can condition for what we find to be objectionable, or the public would find is objectionable, then what do we care whether they're using 55-gallon drums to store this stuff in, or they, or they make their own boxes to store this stuff in? What's the difference? It's a container. It's a, whatever they put it in is going to be some type of a container on site, which is not permanent, which is not a structure. And all we have to do is make sure that there's adequate screening from the, from the rights-of-way and from the other properties.
I have the definition of structure, if you want to hear it.
Where is it? I was looking for.
It's in the definitional section at the end. It's, "Structure means anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having location on the ground, including swimming pools and patio covers, but not including paved areas and not including electrical transformers and power poles."
What section is that, Lisa?
It's the last chapter.
Seventy-six?
I guess it wouldn't be a container.
Yeah, and then it's in alphabetical order under O-two-O.
Does I go straight, so when I go to seventy-six, I go straight to?
O-two-O.
No.
And then it's under S in alphabetical.
Can you, can you read it again?
I didn't see that.
Do that again?
Yes, please.
I don't see that under S in my book.
Boom.
I'm missing some pages in mine.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so.
I go from, I don't know.
I'll, let me get to it. Um, "Structure means anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having location on the ground, including swimming pools and patio covers, but not including paved areas and not including electrical transformers and power poles."
The first two items said erected or constructed, right?
Right.
So a shipping container is neither of those.
That's right. It just, well, it's portable. You drop it off and you sit it on the ground. I mean, it's sitting there.
It's not constructed or anything.
And, uh, the only objection I can see to it is visual. That's, beyond that, it's, I, 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 I mean, I, it's, it's storage. I mean, it's storage.
Why does it have to be a setback for it then? Why can't they just put it on the property line? Just not-
Well, that's another question too. It's not a structure. Why, I mean, a structure's required to be set back. What, you know, if you're, if you want to store your boat on your property, how far do you have to be from your wall?
Five feet, I believe.
Five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Conditional use permits cannot have time limits on them for the same.
For what?
I didn't want to use that word, but for the same structure.
Generally, CUPs don't have time limits. As you know, we allowed it, we've only allowed it one time here, and that was where the applicant said they were going to give up the right, um, when they were done using that building. So the, the CUP really didn't have a one-year, five-year time limit. It was until this use was expired. And then, I think, if I remember right, that person owned the property and they said they would make sure it wasn't sold for, I, I can't remember exactly. And, you know, again, there's some case law, I had researched it. There was some case law that indicated you put a timeframe on conditional uses. The majority of the case law goes the other way. But we weren't completely out of left field in allowing you to do that.
And that's where my concern comes in, is that we, to approving this, we can't really, in my mind, put a timeframe on it. And that's where I get in trouble. If he wants to come back with a different type of permanent use and it fits our things, I would relook at it. It's the conditional use that concerns me with the type of storage he's doing.
Is it the inside shipping containers you have a problem with, or the outside surrounding?
The fact that it's so temporary and it could change if they wanted to on the conditional use permit. You, I just don't feel comfortable. I would rather know if they're going to do something like this, I would rather have them come back with something that made more sense and not a temporary, but a permanent use that they want to put together. I mean, people tear down buildings and change uses. That can happen down the road. But they want it for storage, so come in here and tell me this is what we're going to do, and I want it for storage. And.
No, no, I think, I think they, I think they kind of are doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I think that, what we're saying is, is that we don't want storage there. Deny it. I mean, that's, that's maybe where I'm coming from right now, is it seems like I'm listening to all this, it's like, no, we just don't want storage there. We wouldn't be having this long conversation if we wanted to have storage there. So maybe we don't want storage here, so we just say deny it.
But it's a permitted use. Storage is permitted.
No, it's not, no, it's not. It's a CUP.
CUP.
With the CUP.
That's why we're here. So we just say, no, we don't want storage there.
Right.
If they go put containers there later on, then, then that's a whole other situation.
So that, that really is the question we have right now. Because based upon what, what the code seems to show, what they're putting there is immaterial. They're asking for us to permit-
Storage.
-outdoor storage on this site.
So that, that really is the question we have right now, because based upon what, what the code seems to show, what they're putting there is immaterial. They're asking for us to permit
Storage.
outdoor storage on this site. And I think we all got caught up with the temporary storage containers and temporary, right? But what they're, they're saying, we want to apply for outdoor storage on this site. So that really is, is the question, based upon code.
And I, and I would say, I would say to that, if we're going to have storage anywhere, this is, this is the place. I mean, you're, you're in an industrial area. You don't impact any residential areas. You don't impact any businesses, retail, or office areas. You have, uh, similar uses to the north, industrial use with storage, that, that should meet or have met the same criteria, that it's fenced and you're not storing above it, although some of them are, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, that's, the, the point being that you're in it, if you're going to have storage, this is where you're going to have it. You've got a horse stables to the north, you've got industrial to the north, you've got unimproved land to the south, and if, and you have the ability in the future, I'm, I'm in favor of granting the CUP, but with, subject to a review. And if five years is too long, then make it three years. Make it every three years, subject to a review, to see if anything has changed, any complaints, any, 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 uh, anything that would necessitate a additional, uh, conditions. I mean, even to the point of having them move the containers far away, or their storage farther down their own land, uh, to, to get it, to get it away from any development that may arise on that fifteen acres. But you're built out going all the way to the, on the north side. There's going to be no complaint, no complaint from anybody there, because they've got the same mess that they've got on their property. The only complaint's going to come from the new, anything new along here, and if that's the concern, then condition for a five-year review, and one of the conditions can be that you move farther down your site. I, I would...
I have a question for Stephen. One of the concerns here is an issue to the CUP because it runs with the land. Would a TUP be appropriate for something like this?
Yeah, but that only has a ten, one year, twelve months.
And then is it, then you have to reapply?
Do you have to reply? Is there a cost in that?
Or can you have a review after twelve months?
Can you just keep reviewing it to come?
I wouldn't make a decision to extend a TUP longer than a year. I wouldn't make it administrative. I would kick it up to you guys if somebody wanted something more permanent than a year. It's outside my authority.
It's outside the code.
And I, and I would require them to go to a higher level.
Annual review, then.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at the section for TUPs. I didn't have time to read it in entirety, but fees, the required application fees will be set by the cities. So what, what is the fee for a TUP?
Seventy-five?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two fifty.
Much less than a CUP.
Oh, yeah.
So how about an annual, how about a TUP with an annual review?
Then it's not a temporary use permit.
How about a CUP? How about a CUP with an annual review, then? I mean, either way, I mean, it's...
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to do annual.
Here's my question. Really, if we're concerned about having storage here, then we should deny it, right?
Yeah, I, I, it's a perfect spot for it.
If, and, and, you know, these things are always interesting, because we get to hear everyone's perspective, but, but considering what we talked about, I, I kind of am at the point where I'm, I don't understand now what I was thinking before, because now I'm saying, what they're storing there is immaterial. They could have come to us and said, we want to apply for outdoor storage
Right.
on this parcel, and they, they don't even have to tell us what they're going to put there.
No, correct.
They could have said, it's not going to be anything over eight feet in height, and we're going to put up a nine-foot fence, and we condition it appropriately, and then they put whatever they want there, right?
Well, if we, if we...
Now, if the whole topic of storage containers and temporary versus permanent never came up, we would have been none the wiser, and we would have probably said, what are saying? This is probably a good place to put storage.
It is.
So, so I'm trying to remove that from the equation and look at the code, look at the site. Um, for, I mean, they, they could, we've got, you know, people storing stuff that's less attractive than storage containers on site, but this is our opportunity to, to condition it appropriately and make sure that it's not going to be a problem. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to happen with Arrowhead. I don't know if someone's going to buy that property to the north and bulldoze it and redevelop that. But what we have is an applicant in front of us right now, asking to do something on their land that, that seems reasonable, based upon what we're able to condition and, and what they want to do there. So, I mean, I really kind of changed my position.
And I would add, I would add...
I was going to say, if, if I can make a suggestion, maybe we should first just take a poll to see if you have a majority who want to allow storage there. So then you know which way to go from that point, because if you have a majority who don't even think storage should be there, then...
Then it's the end, end of the conversation.
Right. Yeah, it's either storage.
Right.
No, or storage condition.
You could even require painting them.
Yeah, well, right.
And then you can talk about permanent and the other type of stuff.
That's what I'm saying, you paint, you paint them white, you've made a nice canvas for taggers, but you condition it to where if it's tagged, that it has to be repainted.
Just, if, if I...
Or you hire some artists to come and do some really cool stuff on it. Um, let's just go down the line then really quick and just, for, for storage. Oh, did you want to say something?
If I may, most of your comparisons have been to improved properties. Properties with drainage, properties with curbs, properties with gutters, and properties with pavement. This has none of those things.
In the industrial area, you're, you're saying?
Usually when you approve outdoor storage, you approve it on a paved surface, not rocks.
Right, cor- correct.
So, again, staff reacted to the application that was presented to you.
Right.
We didn't, we didn't sit in a room and negotiate with them. If you tweak it here or you tweak it there, we didn't do that.
I understand.
We're presenting the application that was provided to us from the applicant.
Right, without any conditions or anything like that.
Correct. This isn't like other storage CUPs that have been presented to you.
No, it's not.
That's true.
Throwing rocks on a vacant lot and putting some storage containers is not what I envisioned for the city. So, well...
Well, and that's where I think, I, I think all of us up here are, in a sense, there's an effort for us to work with applicants to try and accommodate to the best of our ability within the code. We don't want to sit up here and just, you know, do everything. We want, we want to try to, to bridge that gap somehow.
Exactly.
Uh, but by the same token, we want to protect the city. We want to impress the aesthetic. But, but like you said, if, if, if the aesthetics are covered and nobody sees it the otherwise, it's conditioned to where it could be revoked if, if thing, if it's conditioned appropriately, there may be an opportunity, like you said, in this particular area right here, when, when other requests for storage or are, are coming through, we are talking typically about a structure that's already in place.
Right.
Or something that's already there in, as far as a development.
It's an accessory.
That, right, this is, as you said, this is none of that. It's kind of uncharted territory. Um, but let's maybe just get a consensus.
Let me just say, one last thing. And Director Mendoza makes a good point. This is rock, dirt, okay? Today, there may not be a drainage problem, okay? They put this, they put the containers on there, depending on how they set them, if they're raised up a little bit so the water, whatever drainage flows beneath them, or however they do it. But at the end of a period of time, after they're there, if it turns out that it is creating a problem, I think there is a drain there, though, I think at the far end of the property already, so I think the drain, you know, it's probably going to go there. But if there was some type of topographical problem that would arise in the next, say, five years, if this is the term we keep talking about, then that's something that you could condition to, to address.
Right.
I mean, I, you know, it's, it's kind of as you go. You don't know, because we don't know what's going in there, so.
Okay.
That's it.
No.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm torn. I would want to see the site improved. I would want to see pavement if we were doing it.
Okay.
No.
What's the question?
A consensus as to whether we are, would, would want to consider even having outdoor storage in a place like this.
Well, before I answer yes or no, I'd like, it's obvious to everybody here that that's a very unique piece of land. It's very, I don't know how long it is, but it's sixty feet wide, so it's very few things that we can actually do with that.
According to code, you can't really do, for an industrial building, you can't even put it on there.
Right, so, so our uses are limited, so we should, if we're going to put, if our use is going to be there, we should have, we should take the opportunity, opportunity to condition it. And I would say yes.
Yes.
And I'm under the guise of yes, but conditioned.
Yes, I agree with you.
And with, with a review. That's the only way that I would consider it, because I, I do agree with you, Stephen, that's not the vision that I have for, for the city either, but a gravelled road that really is not going to be developed for thirty years isn't the vision I have for the city either. And right now, we don't have anything else, even remotely in the works for that piece of property. So I guess until we do, if we have the ability to review and revoke based on developments either around or within that property, that makes more sense to, to me.
You know what I see, and this is probably a part of the problem? All I can vision right now is the Long Beach shipping yards. That's exactly what I see.
Well...
And the problem is, is because I see no other drawings. When we look at housing developments, when we've seen other developments, we've had some kind of pictures done for us to give us a little bit better visual of what they want to present to us, not just a pay, an unpaved road. We should see a little artist rendition of what they're talking about, and that's where a big problem comes in. I see nothing but shipping crates being put down and a wall erected that they don't have to worry about. I want to make sure that what I see, if I'm going to approve, that it comes out looking nice. And this is a major problem I'm having. I think, it's not really the fact that there's shipping crates. I see Long Beach Harbor, and that's all I can visualize, because it's a dirt road, and it's got an industrial thing right there, and there's nothing that anybody's doing to make their property look nice, even though it's behind them. They don't take pride in it, and I get that. But I don't see them coming in with an artist rendition of how they're going to put this together, other than the drawing here, which only tells me how it's going to look if I look from above, how these crates are going to be. And that's where my problem comes in.
So I would suggest maybe this needs to be continued for staff to work with the applicant, to bring something back to you. Clearly, you don't have an approval document in front of you tonight. You have a denial document. We can't just change it because staff needs the opportunity to review and draft conditions. Um, so I think that the public hearing's not been closed. You can continue this to the August twenty-third meeting.
Do we actually have a discussion right now about some of the conditions, maybe, that we would like to see, to, to maybe help the further meeting? I mean, does that sound like?
I think so.
You know, something, um, okay, um, does it? I agree, thank you.
I just can't imagine they're going to spend that much money on this property to make it look good. That's, that's just my thought. I, I, I don't see that happening.
That's their choice.
Okay, that's fine. They don't have to make it look good as much as hide what they're putting in, so that you don't see it. In other words, make it to where it's not, it, so that it's there, but it's not there, type of...
But the aesthetics, I mean, the, what are the rules on the screening? What are the?
It has to be solid, right?
We can condition that. That's up to us. If the applicant decides that they don't want to...
Well, I think you would like to convey that to the applicant, so they can modify their application, right?
Yeah, I guess my point is, and I think, kind of what Gary's saying is, is we get to, we get to state what we would like the conditions to be, and, and we get to, Wendy, to your point, um, we get to say what we want it to look like, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter what's behind the walls, but we get to dictate what we want it to look like. And to your point, Gary, if, if, uh, if actually building out those improvements is too cost prohibitive for them, then they don't have to do it.
Yes.
So that's up to them.
Okay.
But that, this is our opportunity to say, hey, if you're going to put it here, this is what you got to do to make it happen. And, and then the ball's in their court.
Question for staff.
Understood. And it's still a property that requires a CUP, so we don't have to honor, we don't have to give them a CUP, being back to the point of denial. We can just deny it and say, we don't want storage on this property.
Right.
Question from councilor staff. Obviously, we could put conditions in there that deal with the visual impact and the grading and so forth, and access and egress. Can we put conditions that, that are going to reflect the mobility and circulation element of our general plan to, with regard to the vision of possible bike trails? In other words, saying, i- if we grant this, then there'll be understanding that an easement may be appropriate in the future for this, uh, general plan, uh, policy four point four? I mean, is that, is that, can we extend our conditions to things like that?
One of our challenges is to, is to condition this so it does meet the general plan.
Right.
And we'll go back to the table and do that, and meet with the applicant, say, how do you propose to meet this requirement?
And, and maybe the applicant would be inclined to, to dedicate a portion of this long, narrow road for a park or something for the city use in the later date.
And Victor, how that's usually done is through what's called an irrevocable offer of dedication, where they agree that for a period of twenty years, the city has the right to accept an offer of dedication. They don't have to make it now, um, because if the city never develops that bike path, then really the city doesn't want the property either to become its liability issue and something that it has to maintain. But if you think, hey, in the next fifteen or twenty years, we're going to, to be able to get that bike plan, you know, you put in some sort of time period on an offer of dedication and, um, with the right to accept it when you need it during that timeframe, and then they can use it until such time.
I'd encourage staff to pursue that.
Okay, why don't we, so do you guys want to have a discussion, then a brief discussion about maybe some of the conditions besides, besides meeting requirements of the general plan? Are there any?
I, I'm comfortable with staff's ability in that area to
Okay.
to provide us with conditions. I, I, I've made my recommendation on what I'd like to see.
I think we need to have a, I mean, if we have concerns, I think this is the time for us to convey our concerns.
Because those we're hashing out again.
Ultimately, we're the ones who have to make the decisions and live with it. And so I think we're the ones who need to set the direction. Um, I'm not so sure, I mean, so, so having said that, with respect to the, the general plan and the idea of, of that ever becoming a bike path, I, I will just say, I guess this could be our bullet train to nowhere, okay, to have something going along back there. I, I can remember when we first moved into the city in nineteen seventy-seven, this issue arose with the bike path. Uh, they, I, I'm trying to remember when, when they, when Southern Pacific abandoned that, you know, the trains, I can remember the trains going in, because Genal would have a load every now and then. And, uh, and they stopped, and they, I, I have to think that was probably in the late seventies, early eighties that stopped. But I do remember that it came before, I wasn't involved with the city, I'm just, was just but an observer out there, but there was a move to extend, link up with the county, county-wide bike trails, starting behind Saint Hedwig's and running up and behind the suburbia tract through where Cottonwood Park was eventually going to be. But there was a, there was, they were able to get up to Bloomfield and then go on up, and then they wanted to link up with the county-wide trail somewhere, and then also they were talking about the right-of-way. And the city had an opportunity and passed on it years ago to acquire it, okay? And, and, uh, and the, the big complaint then was, who's going to let their kid, because the idea was to go to the schools. The kids over in, in a carrier row would be able to come up and come up Lexington and get on over and, and head over to LAE and McCullough, Pine at the time. And, uh, the parents, who's going to let their kid ride their bike up, up in there, up in the industrial area?
Right.
Who's going to, who's going to actually use it, you know? And, uh, I, I guess it's, you know, I guess it's laudable to have that type of a desire, but...
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that as a...
It's nothing in the immediate, near future at this point. I don't know that that's...
And you'd have to get through to the school district to let them go through.
You get them.
That way it's there if they need it.
Right.
Yeah, but I think we, you know, for me, as far as conditions, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to, uh, a bit of grading up there to lower, to lower the grade just a little bit. I drove back... I drove back there, it seems to be a bit high, but at least to bring it down or bring it level somehow.
Yeah, it doesn't look level.
And, but I don't know how high, I, I don't know, I don't know where, you know, to what grade you're gonna, gonna grade it. You obviously don't wanna create a problem, a water problem. If you've got drainage right now that's adequate, you certainly don't wanna be disrupting it, but, but just something that would level it off, I would, I would like to see, you know, with respect to the screening, I mean, those type, I mean, if those gates are closed, you cannot see down there. I drove by there today.
I don't think, I don't think those are eight feet. Those are certainly not...
Well, they have to be tall. I'm, I'm talking about now for the, well, there's ways to screen it out. I mean, I don't know that those gates have to be...
They have to be a foot above.
They have to be a foot above the...
Well...
According to code.
That's what codes says.
No, the screening, the screening has to be, but if they were to screen right around the, how they wanna come up with the screening is up to them. You know, they could screen, they could screen the containers from, they could, they could have a, have a fence that comes up nine feet.
Next to the container.
Six, six inches from each container, you know, and, and go around it.
Right.
And that would...
Or they could put a nicer fence out there that people are gonna see and not have to...
That's, that's the same as Arrowhead's fence all the way, it's just a continuation.
Yeah, it's ugly.
That's, that's grand, that's...
Well, I would...
That's if this is outside storage. Arguably, it's not.
Excuse me?
Arguably, this is not outside storage. The screening doesn't block.
I think if you're gonna say, I, I think you're gonna say if it's not a structure, then it's outside storage. You can't have it both ways. It's either a struc...
It's outside.
Yeah, it's gotta be one or the other. You're storing the storage containers outside.
Either way, either way, for me, the condition needs to be that it needs to be a foot above.
It's gotta be out of the screen.
I don't...
Yeah, one foot above and screened out. And, and to ensure that it's never visible is to do it right next to it and get it high enough. I mean, then, then you will never see it. I mean, no matter how far away you get or how close you get...
That's fine.
You're not gonna see it if, if, if they've got a fence around it that is, you know, they just build a fence around their whole, a fence within the fence.
Well, in, in a way, it also protects from people vandalizing those containers as well, anyway.
And beyond that, I, I...
Bring us back the picture.
Beyond that, I, I don't know.
Bring us a picture.
And also, I'd like to see a resolution, along with it, I'd like to see a resolution of approval. With a, with a resolution of denial, because we come back for another meeting and then we go back for another meeting.
No, I think the plan is to meet with them and come up hopefully with a resolution of approval at the next meeting. I, I would hope.
Well...
That that is the intent, anyway, based on conditions.
I, I hate bringing resolutions for two things at the same time.
I think it's kinda contradictory because staff is, is gonna work with the applicant to come up with something that we, that they think we may accept, but to also provide us with a resolution of denial would be contradictory.
I don't wanna do that.
Well, it's like getting prison.
Just wanna be prepared for both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I wanna be optimistic and come up with a, hopefully a resolution for approval, but, but a time limit, there's been different numbers thrown around as far as a review. We know it runs with the land, we all get that.
Five.
Are we good with five? For a time limit on review?
Yeah.
Okay.
Staff review or commission review?
Commission review.
I, I think a commission review. I, I think, do you guys?
Just live with it. We create it, let's live with it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Okay. Any other, any other conditions?
I think we wanna go down your list of development standards.
Fencing, pavement, walls, landscaping, grading, he already covered grading, screening.
All those topics.
Parking, do you want parking?
No.
I don't, I don't...
The applicant, Stacy's gonna have one truck going in and out of there.
Yeah, I don't believe for, for the intent, for the intent of...
Right, so this is our opportunity, like Art says, well, that fence matches Arrowhead's fence all the way down. Wendy says it's ugly. We can condition that to be changed. And if it doesn't match Arrowhead's ugly fence, then maybe these are the first guys in the neighborhood to start putting up something nicer. I mean, you know, it kinda goes along with some of the other things we're doing here in town, like the improvements on the Boulevard, you know? Do some things to make it nicer, and then you'll attract nicer things next to you, so...
Yeah, I agree, that's...
If that fence was nicer and taller, I'd be happy with just that. But that's me. No, no.
And I, and I would just say, like, with respect to paving and continual upgrades, that's the stuff that you do...
Nicer, tolerate nicer.
At your reviews. I mean, if, 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 if the areas are, you know, if, if, if that, if that stuff begun, becomes an issue, that's the stuff that you, you add on as you go. I mean, and, and then if it is, and they can always say no and take it all out of there. I mean...
Right.
Wait, are you saying to add more conditions in five years?
If need be. Isn't that the whole idea of review?
That would be the intent of the review.
If not, then we're gonna do it one time and try to be done? I mean, I think that's unfair to the applicant myself to expect this to be treated like a, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm good, I like to see improvement, but I'm not gonna sit here and slam somebody and tell them I wanna, you know, I want cinderblock walls and I want paving and, you know, with the, it'll support, you know, heavy truck traffic and all that, when all I wanna do is put a few containers on there. I mean, you might as well just say, hey...
No, the intent is to go grab their stuff and take it across to the church. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I mean, you know what they're using it for. I mean, it's just where...
Little cart and...
I'm in favor of leveling the site, something to ensure it has appropriate drainage and there's not gonna be issues with puddling and, you know, water flowing out, muddy water flowing out to the stagnant water, to adjacent properties.
Stagnant water.
Stagnant water, correct, because that's like a...
That kinda stuff, mosquitoes.
Big deal these days.
Yep.
The screening, if, I guess the question will be, do we wanna have them, you know, improve that, that fence there, which is...
That's only one fence though, right? So then at that point, they've got that fence which handles one side of it, you've got basically three other sides that would need to be addressed in some way, shape, or form.
Go back to that, go back to that picture with the orange containers. Maybe that's...
So those are only really obstructed by two sides?
Right.
On the other two sides.
But I mean, that's kinda what you're looking at.
Right.
Eventually, down there. I mean, that's...
Well, and that's what...
And maybe that's where it ought to be.
That's what we don't...
Eventually, that might be where it is, if they're there long enough.
It's paved.
Yeah, it's paved.
That's the end of the, that's the end of the property, correct?
It's paved though.
That is the end of the...
Underneath there, right?
That's the school property.
That's the school property.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't even say that those are screened, even by the buildings, unless the school district owns both those buildings.
Well, they aren't screened by the, by the owner of the, they are not screened by the owner of the, the containers, that's for sure. Just, just out of curiosity, you have them up towards the front of the property, is that just basically for convenience of access versus putting them at, at this end where it's more out of sight, out of mind?
Well, it's, it's up front for that purpose, but also, if you look at the property, it, it drops down two or three feet in that area where we proposed to put it.
Okay.
So they would be lower. And that, the front fence that's on there, there used to just be a chain across there, I don't know if anybody remembers that. And we took it upon ourselves and we put our defense there and we put a couple of palm trees and some landscaping and, and an approach just to make it look better for when people drive, drive by. So that is our goal, that is the way that we do things, is to try to not have ugly stuff out there. And we, like I said, we did that on our own, so... But the reason it's, it's about three feet lower there and easier, and if you look to the left on this picture, there is a drain right there that's been there for years.
Okay.
That, if this is kind of pitched toward, in this last season of rain we had, we had no problems whatsoever with standing water or water running into the street. It was all contained on site and, and was good. We would lift the, the containers up on blocks or redwood four by four so it wouldn't stop any of the water flow that would travel over toward the drain.
Okay.
Well, can I say, why don't you put the containers across the street on your property?
Well, Stephen pointed that out. He said it's a parking issue.
I said it's a parking issue?
Yeah. You said that, that's why you, you have to make sure the parking's maintained for storage.
It's not within my city.
I know, but that's a reason. Stephen didn't say it applies to us, but he did give that as a reason not to put containers in a parking lot.
No, I think she's asking, would you put this type of thing on your truck set?
If we had the...
Would you pay your green lot? Would you, would you put this in your nice green lawn?
This, this is a totally different piece of property, not on Cotella Boulevard. I'm sure that if I asked you guys to put it next door, if we owned the property, that would, wouldn't even be talked about. Unlike the city of Cypress, that stores all their, their semi, allows storage of their semi truck trailers on Cotella, you know, right across from our, our properties.
Yeah.
Well, the city owns that and they rent it, so that's their motivation there.
Have you, have you investigated that option of, with, with the city of putting those containers on your property in some, not necessarily in the front, but somewhere on, on that existing property?
Well, we have, part of our conditions are that we maintain a certain amount of parking, so that would interfere with that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I know, I know that, yeah, I know that. I just was curious if you had actually checked out.
Well, that was part of the conditions when we moved in, is we had to maintain a certain number of parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you. So there doesn't seem to be any general consensus, it seems to be either way, either the fence, changing that fence, or actually fencing around it?
Just let them work with this guy.
Either way, work with it, figure, figure something out? See what they come up with?
Staff can handle all this.
Okay.
They have enough direction.
Okay. It sounds good.
So is it direction for staff to condition or direction for the applicant to alter their application?
Work together.
Which way's more efficient?
Well, one of you had required elevation and asked for elevations.
Right.
Do you want us to condition that elevations come due? Do you want me to have them submit elevation?
Submit.
One of you asked for grading. Do you want a grading plan?
No.
So I need to know what you guys want delivered and changed on their plans to show you those changes incorporated. Do you want fencing samples? Do you want the types of metals he's going to use? What would you like to know?
I would like to know, what is it gonna look like, an artist rendition, and what materials they'll use?
Just an artist's rendering.
So you want elevation of the fencing and the structure, well, storage per unit?
Storage.
All four sides? Just asking, because we're at the counter and it's gonna cost them money, so we wanna make sure we get you what you need.
The applicant's been sitting here listening to this discussion, so I think he's aware, the applicant's aware of what he needs to bring to staff.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Not totally clear. Seven opinions?
I, I think the applicant and staff can probably meet to figure out.
So what I'm taking away, there was an interest in grading and lowering the grade, leveling it off, is what I heard.
I don't, I don't know that it needs to be lowered as much as leveled.
No, it's great, it's, you know, just, just that it be leveled. I mean, you know, level from...
He's already stated...
If they already have it, if it's already down, I mean...
But, but I, I wanna ensure that it's...
Level.
That it's leveled, that the containers are leveled, and leveled to the point, I mean, it needs to be able to drain appropriately, which means it's not gonna be...
Drain level.
To whatever the local drain is there, right? We wanna make sure that we don't have stagnant water, water flowing into the street, water flowing into adjacent properties.
He says it is, we just need to condition it. I mean, he says it's already, he said, he's saying that it's, based on this last winter, that it was already that way?
Right.
But we, as long as we condition it...
It has to be that way.
It has to be that way.
That it remain that way.
Exactly.
If that's a condition that, that drainage must always be adequate and da-da-da, that's a condition.
Right, but he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to change it if it already exists that way, but it's a condition.
If it's there, you don't have to, but it's a condition that we can, we can add, and then...
No, it should be added.
Yeah, we agree on that.
Or they have, we have right now, and then...
But it's enforceable at any time.
It's enforceable at any time. If the next rain comes and, and we've got mud in the street, then...
Right.
Or it's backing up around the containers and creating a small little river, then we...
So I think if we could get a...
Correct it.
A clear description of, of what it's actually going to look like and the materials used for the fencing around, that, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, and then we can see what it looks like.
Okay, condition the grading, provide elevations, including fencing materials. Make sure it meets code for screening.
And setbacks, where, you know, do we need to have them adhere to, I mean, under a CUP, do they still have to obviously adhere to the ten-foot setback, right?
If you want me to findings that it meets the code, yes.
So, so therefore...
No, it has to comply with whatever the code is.
So that has to be changed in it based on what we already have?
Okay.
And then, I don't know if the condition needs to be set in there, but obviously, if they're, the containers need to be maintained on the exterior, not just covering up painting, but, I mean, when they sit for a year or two or three years, they start looking pretty haggard if they're not cleaned on a regular basis.
Right.
Not that we would be able to see them necessarily, but they need to be maintained. Anything else? Okay, so do we need to make a motion to, or can we just, just, oh, go ahead?
Hi, good evening. Just a quick question regarding the setback. I, I thought we decided that they weren't classified as, under the definitions of the code, as structures, and so therefore they wouldn't be required to adhere to that ten-foot setback along the south?
No, the hundred and fifty foot or whatever, the whatever.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the one, you don't have to comply with the one for metal buildings, I think.
Right.
Metal structures, but you still need to comply with setback.
For the outdoor storage.
No, she's arguing the opposite.
I think she's asking for clarification.
Clarification of the outdoor storage.
Yeah, there's...
Do you want her to meet the development standards of the industrial zone for these containers?
We need it, we need them for outdoor storage. For outdoor storage.
Which is a ten-foot.
Not for metal containers.
Which is a ten-foot.
Ten-foot setback.
Right.
So outdoor storage shall be setback ten feet from the property, side property line.
If that's what the code is, then yeah, that's what it has to be.
If they're gonna put up a fence, that fence is enclosing their outdoor storage area. The fence needs to be ten feet from the property line. The fence needs to be ten feet from the property line.
There has to be a setback of ten feet, which means you can't develop or you can't...
Yeah, nothing can be in that ten feet.
Your container, your fence, you, you can't be sitting in that, you gotta be ten feet from the property line.
Sure, the way that I understood the code was that ten foot setback is for buildings?
No, it's under outdoor storage, uh, seventeen point three eight point one two O subsection C. I'll give you the...
Very fine, I'll take your word for it. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, uh, we just go ahead and continue this to the next, uh, leave the public hearing open and continue this to the next meeting?
To be August twenty third.
August twenty third meeting, okay? That is it done? Thank you very much. We'll see you next month. Yeah, so I was afraid of.
We'll go back and watch.
Okay.
Did you close it yet?
I, I have, no, it's still open.
Stephen, should we, should we also delineate what can be stored in there?
I don't think it's appropriate to continue that conversation with the applicant.
I can deal with that when it comes.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
I do.
Just so it's not dangerous or...
Well, that's, that's, that's in the code.
That's in the code, you can't have hazardous material.
Right.
They're both your bombings.
You can't cook meth, hey Victor, you can't cook meth in there either. Um, item number eight.
No people being stored.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be helpful.
No, no, this can't be a growth facility.
They might have some cardboard cutouts of people in there though. Items from the development services director.
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, Los Alamos Boulevard is continuing with construction. Curbs are in, gutters are in, we got those done on time. You probably noticed that this is the slowest project in the world. It is, and you see a plumber out there and an electrician out there and then a pipe bidder out there, but never two of the same guy. And that's exactly how the, the winning bid came in. How, is how he's able to do it at that price. But we got two things coming up, we've got the concrete crosswalks coming in soon. The date will be established in the next two dates and you'll see press releases, information on nextdoor.com and to yourself about going down to one lane at those crosswalks for, for a four day period to allow the concrete to cure.
Wow.
And Florista will be closed east, what, eastbound and westbound at the same time for their crosswalks.
Wow.
So we're gonna rip off the band-aid, do it all at once.
So I can't leave my driveway?
No, you know, Florista at the intersection only, at Los Alamos Boulevard.
I knew, I thought I was getting out of work.
You have a grid system so you can get out.
Hey, Stephen...
I'm trying.
You'll see nine different...
They won't call your employer and tell them to fly if you...
And you'll see six different message boards sprinkled throughout the city in advance. That's why I'm not letting it start yet because I, I want the date, I want to get the message boards, I wanna get the press releases out. I have a method to that. I'm sorry, John?
Um, so I've, I've been driving by there a lot lately. Do they have a requirement to, to leave the site clean? Because I see a lot of trash, empty water bottles.
I've been picking it up, my guys have been sweeping it, yeah, they do. But we've been trying to make up for it.
Yeah, it just looks kinda... A messy construction site, when there's people on it doing stuff is, is one thing, but when it's just sitting there vacant and there's trash laying around, it just, it looks terrible.
Yeah, we've been out there with sweepers a couple of times, trying to make sure it doesn't look like all those construction projects you see that are weed infested and litter infested, right?
But isn't that contractor's obligation?
It is.
Do you send them a bill?
But I'm not gonna wait, I'm not, I'd rather, I'd rather pick it up than make a phone call.
Do you send them a bill?
I do, the, the, um, the project manager does.
Perfect.
Smack 'em away. And then, part of this project is a intersection of Farnham and Kinmont. Uh, he's bid in this project too, so that curb and gutter is gonna be raised over in that area. We, that's gonna be more immediate, you're gonna see that in the next couple of weeks. So we bagged the no parking signs in that area, so people, I'm sorry, the street sweeping parking signs, so people can park where they want when we, uh, remove their curbs, gutters and sidewalks in order to lift the intersection for drainage. So you're gonna see a little interruption in that area, um, and...
Is the crosswalk gonna be before school starts?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes, school starts on the thirtieth, I believe, right?
My daughter drives.
Um, yes. It'll be cured and done, all, all of them will be done by that date. And that's what we're aiming for, we're aiming to get those delineators out of the streets, get the lanes back to it so where the contractors are just gonna be working within the curbs.
Okay.
That, that's our goal. And then you'll see the poles pretty soon, the trees pretty soon, start going in and then the rocks and landscaping and lighting. You'll see those come in and the signage as well. So, um, that's an exciting project, so if I don't return your emails or get back to you fast, I'm probably out there. Um, and I think that's about it. We're still working with Pervesa to try to get a new tenant in there. Um, not easy, but we're, we're nudging. That's about all we can do with it. Hotel is in, planned, the building plans are done. The grading plan, their, um, their engineer has one more cement to get us and we're ready to issue. Tom sent another reminder letter to him today, because we're making sure he doesn't hit any deadlines that the commission has established. So we're reminding him more than he's calling us, so we're nudging a lot. And that's it for us.
Commissioner reports? Just had a question, we, we approved a strawberry stand a while back for that corner on, uh, with the Bloomfield and Cerritos. Yeah, I, I never saw it.
Right.
The property owner raised the prices on them once they got to CUP.
Oh, how convenient, jeez.
I wanted those strawberries.
Wow, okay.
Because once they got to CUP, the property owner raised the price of renting the spot.
That seems a little odd.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
We can find him another spot.
Yeah.
Just curious, I, I, you know, I expected to see a guy in a strawberry suit or something out on the corner.
I was looking for it too.
The one on Catella's right now?
Yes, it is. It is.
They're good strawberries.
Uh, anything else from anybody?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, um, topic of decorum, because we've, uh, I think tonight was an example of a productive meeting where we had some different opinions, but everyone was calm, respectful, we had good discussion and, you know, we end up with a result where we're moving forward together. Um, we've had some meetings in the past where there seems to be some more contention, whether it's up here amongst us or even, uh, towards our applicants. And I think it's important that we, um, that we stay professional. We treat each other and our applicants and staff with respect. And, uh, and that we, the public knows that that's how we do business. So I, I, I wanted to just kinda mention that as a topic, um, Larry, as, as the chair.
Agree.
You have some authority in being able to manage that when you, when you see things or feel things going out, you know, speeding out of control. I also would encourage the attorney to step in and let us know when we're...
Had that discussion after the fact and this was a rookie move on my part.
Yeah, this is just...
But I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, and it's just about making sure that, that we're all treating everybody with respect and getting...
Absolutely.
And like I was saying, I would appreciate it if the attorney reminds us when we're doing things we shouldn't be doing, because occasionally...
Well, I won't let it happen again.
You know, and keep us all honest up here, doing a good job.
I agree with you, um, thank you for bringing that up. And also, um, from my point of view too, with respect to tonight, you know, um, in my mind, I saw this and I thought, well, this isn't gonna take very long. And I, I, I just, I, I just wanna say that, you know, what this tells me though, is that you've got seven people up here that really care to, to take the amount of time to go through this at, at the level that we went through it. Um, that, that, um, actually, thank you for, for actually making that extra effort and, and, and like I said, what, in, in my mind, uh, uh, very much showing of, of caring for the city, for, for the applicant and, and trying to make this the best place that, that we can live and, and work. So anyway, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I agree, and I don't want my, the decorum topic to keep anybody from sharing information. Like I said, tonight was a great example where I came in here thinking what I, I thought I knew and then learning something from a fellow commissioner, uh, you know, about the code and about kinda what we're really looking at.
Absolutely.